Dr. Maulana Maolana started putting in place before we had what we now enjoy as the year, the Year of Return and then eventually Beyond the Return. In the 1st of October, 1st of August, sorry, 2017, he also initiated the second resurrection of the Asin Manso burial site in recognition of the good works of our Jamaican sister, Sister Minion Phillips, and the brother African American Sonny Carson. And these, their mortal remains were laid to rest at the Asin Manso baths and Dr. Maulana was very much a part of that. For the first time ever, the African continent started to celebrate the Ministry of the Future Right to Return Ceremony Festival. And this is very important because it shows you the place in which we have to place the return of our brothers and sisters from the diaspora. It was the great Dr. Maulana who started to sensitize our government and our stakeholders that inside the African American community, we control trillions of dollars of spending power. And to be brothers and sisters who are not linked is to do ourselves a disservice. So he could see that there is no future for unified African continent when we have our brothers and sisters scattered all over the world and we do not belong to one nation. So Dr. Maulana Maolana is very much to be recognized as a key figure in putting together what we have today as the Beyond the Return and you can see that it's only going to grow from strength to strength because you can imagine when we all link up, when our resources are put in one pot, when we benefit from the economies of scale of having over 1.2 billion people all gathered together with a unified purpose of mind to move Africa forward. It was very important for him to acknowledge that Ghana has a moral obligation to the descendants of African transatlantic slave trade to grant them a right of return in that it is very painful for someone wanting to come home and you're told that immigration or you're told that the embassy in your home where you were trying to apply that you need a visa to come home. In fact, it's almost really insulting. So you can imagine the sentiments of people who feel like they want to come home and we have these bureaucratic impediments in place. And so it was the efforts of Dr. Maulana Maolana who have brought these issues to the fore and luckily our governments, both the past government and the current government have taken it on board. We thank the Office of Diaspora Affairs, we thank the presidency and we thank all the stakeholders who have contributed to taking this vision to higher heights. I want to pray that the almighty ancestors continue to grant Dr. Maulana the strength and the wisdom to take this as far as it's supposed to go to so that we can live and have a one African united conference, one African people and one African destiny. So ladies and gentlemen, please, with the greatest of applause, let's welcome up on stage none other than the honorable, one son of Ghana, one son of Africa, Dr. Maulana Maolana. Please, you can let him, let's let them hear it all the way in Bukom, let's hear him in Sunyane, let's hear them, hear you clapping for him all the way in Kumasi. As for Kaneshi, they can hear us, please. Let's receive Dr. Maulana Maolana, congratulations, doctor.
Ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, dignitaries, protocol to all on the high table. Ni me, na me, protocol to the traditional rulers. We are here today, there is so much to be discussed. I'm not the individual that go around making noise. I'm the individual that believe in getting the job done. And I'm the individual where it doesn't matter who gets the credit, but it matters who gets the job done. So this is what I'm about. Now, the introduction was very, very deep and heavy. I tried to do my best to measure up to how I was introduced because I've been on this journey here in Ghana for almost 50 years. Those of you who may know me going back to 1989, 1990, 1991 at the Commission on Culture as a research fellow know that I'm not a small boy. I just didn't come overnight. But what is important? Ladies and gentlemen, there are certain subjects that I must acknowledge that's on my table right now for me to talk about. One of them is, I want to give thanks and praise first of all to God Almighty for giving me the health and intellect to be able to carry on. I want to give thanks and praise to the honorable Bishop Charles Aban for his efforts and work that he is doing. Can we get a good hand for this brother? Believe me. Bishop, I thank you for inviting us on the platform. Now, if I may explain to you ladies and gentlemen why are we of Ministry of the Future are here today on December the 8th and this is supposed to be a three-day program, December the 8th, 9th and 10th. Ministry of the Future is about celebrating its 7th anniversary and the 7th anniversary comes on the 28th of December. When I say 7th anniversary, the 7th anniversary of celebrating for the first time Africans of the diaspora receive Ghanaian citizenship collectively. So that's supposed to be on the 28th of December. But Bishop had asked me to assist him with this program. So why not? We moved our program from December 28th back to December the 8th to join together with Bishop Aban. But I want to make it clear, ladies and gentlemen, listen to me very carefully because we're into the spin-off of the Year of Return. Now we're into Beyond the Return. But I want you to know of the African diaspora and you can put your last paswa on what I'm telling you and I'm telling you the truth. The Year of Return comes from the African diaspora initiative. It is not a government initiative. The Africans of the diaspora started this going back as early as 1990. So the Africans of the diaspora, I think, should get a hand for the effort that we all have put into bringing the Year of Return and Beyond the Return. And we brought 2.2 billion dollars in 2019 in the coffers of Ghana, what we call a love gift. And there are billions more that we can bring into Ghana and they're gonna come. I made this proclamation on TV Africa in 2013 and if you think I'm joking, I have it on video. I have it on video where I made a prophetical projection that Ghana will receive trillions of dollars as we move toward 2017, 2018, 2019. Of course, it already has happened and more is going to happen. So we must be poised over the fact to know that the Africans of the diaspora is coming and the Africans of the diaspora must be poised of the fact to understand that you must come humbly with respect to your motherland, respect to the indigenous who have been the custodian of the land. We must come here first of all for economic integration. Economic integration is extremely important before you start talking about social integration. The contrary, Ghana, Ghana needs assistance. She needs assistance economically. We have an unemployment situation in this country amongst the youth as much as 65 to 70%. So we of the African diaspora have to focus on putting implementing programs in place that's going to help to develop this country economically. And this is one of the reasons that we have been able to get the Serenam ambassador, Her Excellency Fidelia Gran Galon. She is due, she was due to be here today and she may even come before the program ends. Serenam, I want to give you just a perspective view, Serenam. Serenam is very important and central to the return of your brothers and sisters of the diaspora and to the development of Africa. Why do I say that? Serenam, if you don't know, is in South America. It is next door to Venezuela and just above Brazil. But what is important about Serenam is 500 years ago, a Dutch slave ship landed in Jamestown and at Cape Coast and they kidnapped several hundred Ghanans, 500 years ago. We know that millions of our people were kidnapped and taken out. But this Serenam was a unique situation. It was unique in the sense that those that were kidnapped and taken to Serenam, the captives, they, they had an insurrection on the ship when it landed at South America. They killed the captain, took over the ship and fled into the interior of the country. Now, the reason I am mentioning this is this. I'm mentioning this for legitimacy of the right to return. Let me put it in perspective. Those in Serenam that fled into the interior, they only had the Akon language tree and fanti and they were speaking Ga, 500 years ago. That's all they knew. So when they fled into the interior of the bush in South America, the white man was afraid to go in and get them. So they dwelled there alone for hundreds of years and they enriched, the only language that they had was Akon and Ga. And so in the 20th century, a university in the United States, a science department, sent a team to find them and they found them in 1984. They are the Maroons of Serenam. And after 500 years, the clock stopped 500 years ago. They are speaking a broken tree. They are speaking a broken fanti that they did 500 years ago. They are speaking a broken Ga. So this is significant for the Africans in the diaspora because what that does, that gives the legitimacy that no African country can deny and say that the Africans of the diaspora, which you call black Americans, which you should never do. You should always refer to them as African Americans or you should refer to them as African black Brits. Serenam validates that. You cannot deny. She is the legitimate umbrella that actually gives credence to the evidence that we are from this continent and we must return as part and parcel. And let me go further and tell you this. The Lord Almighty, in this case you say Jesus Christ, I have seen the other side. I have seen the coming of the Lord. I have been to the mountain and I have seen that Africa cannot be free unless she integrates and accept her daughters and sons who were taken out as slaves and bring them back home. Africa will never be free until she accept them. I'm telling you. And if you don't believe me, just look around you. We got problems in the north, problems in the south, problems in the east, problem in the west. We got tribalism, we got civil war. It is only the Africans in the diaspora who got the right minds together though who can come back here and rebuild Africa with the African indigenous and make Africa great again. And we shall do that. We shall do that. Give us a chance. So ladies and gentlemen, I want to say nothing good comes through a process of just talk. And you know, we as African people, we are good at talk, 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 talk. But it's, it's time now we stop talking. It's time now we start delivering on our talk. So what it is, it is very important that the chieftainsees, and I must say, and I must give credit to the God Manchi and his entourage, the God Manchi stool, they have been so cooperative and been very warm in understanding our issues. So let's give them clap. Yes, indeed, because we will need them. You can't come back to your house without going to the chief's house. No, you can't do that. You got to go to the chief's house before you go back to your mother's house. So the chieftainsee is extremely important that they be abreast of who we are, how we have suffered and they must put their weight out in front of us to help our people to get their citizenship through the immigration department and the Ministry of the Interior. We must, we must get your support in doing that because we must not stand in line like many of the junior immigration officers are telling you. They will tell you, oh, the immigration law say you get in line with the Chinese, you get in line with the Russians, you get in line with the British and we'll consider your citizenship. Well, they didn't say that when they came here and kidnapped us. They didn't say you get in line, they just took us, put it in the ship and took us and threw us into bondage captivity. But God Almighty being so great, in those years of captivity, we learned intellectually many things about the white man and the white man's world that Africa never had chance to learn. We learned about the spirit of the white man. We know him better than he know himself. And we learned skills and we've been able to accumulate money, capital. We want to bring that skill, capital and money back to motherland, Ghana. You understand me? And mind you, let's talk about Ghana. Why Ghana? The reason I say Ghana, Africans of the diaspora that vowed to return home. They didn't vow to go to Nigeria. They didn't vow to go to South Africa. They didn't vow to go to Togo. They didn't vow to go to Kenya. They vowed to come home to Ghana because Ghana is in the center of the earth. In the center of the earth is where God has his kingdom. Ghana is the new Jerusalem. If you don't know that, do you hear me? So this is why all of the diaspora have eyes on Ghana. Ghana is sacred. Ghana is divine. So ladies and gentlemen, let me get to the economic dimension of what I should be saying. Bishop Aban with his heart. Our vibration is so heavy that the helicopter has to pick up the sound. Let me go with Bishop Aban being so compassionate. Bishop Aban, he put his money before his mouth. He said Africans of the diaspora, this is a spiritual movement. And if you don't know this ladies and gentlemen, it's a spiritual movement and many of our brothers and sisters, they have mistaken the coming home and they think it's a physical, material movement. This is a spiritual movement first. It has been, it has been ordained by God Almighty. It has been ordained by ancient ancestors. So what you see happening today has already been seen and the ordination of that, we shall return. What God has ordained, no man or woman can change. This will happen. We will come back and we will make Africa great again. Bishop Aban has started the process. This is a wake-up call to others. If you have land and you want your land developed, give it to right-minded Africans of the diaspora. Bishop Aban, just over the last couple of weeks, has granted a large plot of land in Tetegu to the Africans of the diaspora free so we can build a business commerce village and we're going to do that. So let's give a hand for Bishop Aban to do that. So ladies and gentlemen, there's much to be talked about but I just before I finish my submission, it's to come back again and put the emphasis on economic integration. Africans of the diaspora, to the chieftainsee and all of those dignitaries who are here. Many of our brethren and sisterings are coming back very innocent and ignorant to a great degree of the continent. And they are being scammed by rascals who are selling them land 10 to 12 times over and they have lost their money, they have lost so much. And you know how we are. When you do wrong, people will go back and make noise. We don't want Ghana's image tarnished. So I am begging that the traditional leaders get on top of these scammers who are fraudulently selling land that they know is not theirs and try to help the Africans of the diaspora to navigate in the right path to do the right thing. Please, I beg you to get involved with that. The other thing is, as I say, and this goes out to the Africans of the diaspora. A moment ago, I mentioned economic integration. Africans of the diaspora and Ghanans because this is going to be, it's going to be a win-win situation for Ghanans and Africans of the diaspora. You know, the Chinese come here, the Europeans come here. Yeah, they come with the money, they come with the skills but they have absolutely no interest whatsoever on integrating the African into their business. They're taking all of their money and taking it back to Europe. But here, your brothers and sisters from the diaspora, we are coming home and we expect to be integrated into the family. So I beg of you, this is what we need to do, which we do not have. That's why the Year of Return, organizing that was to see money. But if you don't have a program in place to educate Ghanans about the Year of Return, most Ghanans don't have a clue. Why are their brothers and sisters coming back of the Year of Return? So chieftainsees and dignitaries, I am saying it is high time now that we put educational structures in place to educate our Ghanaian brothers and sisters about the significance of the Africans of the diaspora and their return. And we need to put educational structures in place for the Africans of the diaspora that come, which they don't exist right now. They just say, come, come home, spend your money. After your money is finished, bye-bye, go back. We need to have structures in place to welcome them home, to educate them. They need to have a place where they know they can rest their head safely with security and to know that they are part and parcel. Let me, let me mention one thing. And I know the traditional rulers will understand what I'm about to say. And what I'm about to say, I said it at Panafest at 2016 in Cape Coast Castle in the Palava Hall. I said what I'm gonna say now. Traditional rulers know, but most of you people in the audience may not know. It is this, when you are living in a land or a village and there is mass murder or for some reason a great majority of the people perish in the village, you must prepare the funerary rites for them. Is that, is that not so? You have to prepare the funerary rites for the deceased so that they can go peacefully into the hereafter. And we have in our African culture, going all the way back to ancient Israel, where the god Adame came from, the Krobo came from, Egypt, Kush, the Akons came from, the Airways in the Tigris and the Euphrates River, they all have the same culture. If you do not prepare the funerary rites for the deceased, especially en masse, the deceased spirits, they will rise above the village or that nation and they will stay over that nation and they will cause nothing but havoc and destruction on that nation until you give them the proper funerary rites. Now, Africa has lost hundreds of millions of its children in the Af slave trade and the European transatlantic slave trade. Have we given them the funerary rites for their spirit and soul to go into the hereafter? And you know, and you cannot deny, Africa has all kinds of havoc and destruction from South Africa, Ethiopia, Somalia, Guinea, Nigeria is still hanging over the continent. So what I am telling you, traditional leaders, I believe very much so that this has to do with the non-recognition of the funerary rites that must be given to the deceased and the best way to do that is to give these rites to their children to amend for whatever sins that we may have made. Welcome home, your children from the diaspora, without fear nor favor. Well, let me wrap up. The management of the program were due to show a video, I don't know if it could be done, of the Serenam people that I was talking about and to show what happened. So ladies and gentlemen, there's much more that I could say. I don't write speeches and I don't read from speeches. I speak from my heart and I speak by memory. So I'm telling you from my heart how I feel. You know, we love Ghana. May God bless Ghana. Ghana is in the center of the earth. Ghana is the new Jerusalem and we must support that with the Africans of the diaspora. Thank you. May God bless you. May God bless you. May God Almighty bless you.
Organize Dr. Maulana Maolana of the Ministry of the Future. Dr. Maulana Maolana.
from South Africa, Ethiopia, Somalia, Guinea, Nigeria is still hanging over the continent. So what I am telling you, traditional leaders, I believe very much so that this has to do with the non-recognition of the funerary rites that must be given to the deceased. And the best way to do that is to give these rites to their children to amend for whatever sins that we may have made. Welcome home, your children from the diaspora, without fear nor favor. Well, let me wrap up. Uh, the management of the program were due to show a video, I don't know if it could be done, of the Serenam people that I was talking about and to show what happened. So ladies and gentlemen, there's much more that I could say. I don't write speeches, and I don't read from speeches. I speak from my heart, and I speak by memory. So I'm telling you from my heart how I feel. You know, we love Ghana, may God bless Ghana. Ghana is in the center of the earth. Ghana is the new Jerusalem. And we must support that with the Africans of the diaspora. Thank you, may God bless you, may God bless you, may God Almighty bless you.
I recognize Dr. Maulana Maulana of the Ministry of the Future. Dr. Maulana Maulana of the Ministry of the Future. I have said a lot about this gentleman, but it is worth repeating a few things because, uh, he has had a very great impact on the work that we're doing to grow the relationships within our diasporan communities. As the founder of the Ministry of the Future in 2014, I have already told you the work that he did in engaging the public on TV, on TV Africa, uh, on a weekly show. His contribution to gearing us up to reach this point where we have Beyond the Return, where the Year of Return, where we had the recognition of the first thirty-four Africans to be granted citizenship. He was here to explain to you why someone who was removed from this land violently and denied their dignity does not deserve to have to come back home through the bureaucracy of visas and the bureaucracy of work permits and so on and so forth. So I want to call up Dr. Maulana Maulana for his un, an invaluable contribution to the work of growing relations with the diasporans and the continental African. And from his own mouth, he has told you that Africa shall not be Africa who she's supposed to be if we let go of our brothers and sisters, the links they have, the education they have, and the experience they have. And so please, let's give a rousing round of applause for a gentleman who has dedicated his life to growing the relationships between African brothers and sisters, Dr. Maulana Maulana.
Before I receive that, may I make a, a comment or two, a submission, before receiving this? Ladies and gentlemen, I am really, really at awe in my heart to receive this. But it would be remiss of me to receive this without calling on some of the members in the diaspora community who have walked that walk and talked that talk with me down the road. So I would like to call you up to receive this award on my behalf. Let me call Brother Kenfee to come forward first. Kenfee, will you come up here, please? Sister Erna, you've been there. You've been running your mouth, supporting the program, and giving your energies and your resources. It's on behalf of you, please come. I would like to call Brother Larry Uriel Manning. You've been coming and going, you have given me support. You come up. Please, and I want you to be a part of this photogenic, uh, review here, my sister. Because I could never have gotten over three hundred Africans of the diaspora their citizenship without the help of all of them, and there were, there were even more. So on their behalf, I humbly accept this particular citation. Bishop?